The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you instruct the Sergeant at Arms to inform the members in the annex that we have a roll call vote going on? Because the speakers are not working. I see three people. There are three Aldermen in the annex. Instruct the Sergeant at Arms to bring them in.
Go get him. Go get him. Go get him. Get up.
Any other meeting of Sergeant at Arms that's clear there's a roll call. Sergeant at Arms has not walked in there and told us that we are rolling the public right now. Please bring them in.
I'm going to decline that motion. Alderman Beal, do you have a motion?
Well, Madam President, I do have a motion. However, my motion is going to be prolonged because I do have a few things to say while we go and grab the people in the back in order to have a quorum. And so, Madam President, this is a very, very important issue that the people of Chicago are looking to have answers.
Alderman Beal, I believe that your options are to either make a motion to recess or to adjourn. Excuse me.
Well, Madam President, knowing that you are giving me a couple of options and the Sergeant at Arms is gathering the people in the back that are playing hide-and-go-seek when it comes to the people's business, I'll make a motion that we recess until 9:45 Tuesday morning.
Alderman Beal, might I just suggest perhaps we motion to recess for a time we're not in council?
Well, we don't have council until 10 o'clock.
Okay.
We have council at 10 o'clock Tuesday morning, so I think 9:45 is sufficient time to pass one particular ordinance out of this body as a whole in order to get to the 10 o'clock meeting.
Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll on the matter to recess till Tuesday morning at 9:45?
There's Alderman Mitz. We have 26, Madam President. Coleman. Was Coleman on the roll?
Yeah, she's right here.
We have Coleman and Mitz here. We have 27.
Madam Clerk, I believe we just need to take the roll to ensure we have quorum.
I, we, excuse me. So we are taking quorum roll call. One more time. Okay. Are we ready? Okay. Just give us one second to upload it.
The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I have to go there, but I just have one question. I legitimately don't know the answer to this, and I need law to answer this. We already took a roll call. We already took a... Okay. All right. All right, just go ahead.
So Madam Clerk, please take the roll. Madam Clerk, we are recessing till Tuesday at 9:45 a.m.
Do we have quorum? Do we have quorum?
Okay. Madam Clerk, pardon me. I apologize. I apologize. I'm a little new. Folks in the back, just have a little grace with me. I'm a little new today. I apologize, Alderman Beal. Madam Clerk, please take the roll for quorum. I apologize.
Alderman Spazato. Alderman Spazato, not present in chambers. Alderman Hopkins.
Present.
Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderwoman Dowell, not present in chambers. Alderperson Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderman Nancy. Alderman Nancy is present. Alderman Hall, not present in chambers. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderwoman Harris, not present in chambers. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Chico.
Present.
Alderman Chico is present. Alderwoman Lee.
Present.
Alderwoman Lee is present. Alderwoman Ramirez, not present in chambers. Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Quinn is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present in chambers. Alderman Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Lopez is present. Alderwoman Coleman.
Coleman is present.
Alderwoman Coleman is present. Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley.
Present.
Alderman Mosley is not present. Alderman, oh, he's present, I'm sorry. Alderman Mosley is present. Alderman Rodriguez, not present. Alderman Tavarez.
Here.
Alderman Tavarez is present. Alderwoman Scott.
Present.
Alderwoman Scott is present. Alderman Sigchel Lopez, not present. Alderperson Fuentes, not present. Alderman Burnett, not present. Alderman Irvin.
Present.
Alderman Irvin is present. Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Present.
Alderman Talia Pharoah is present. Alderwoman Cruz, not present. Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Waggasback.
Present.
Alderman Waggasback is present. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Conway, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present.
Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas is present. Alderwoman Mitz.
Present.
Alderwoman Mitz is present. Alderman Spazato.
Ex Spazato's here.
Alderman Spazato is present. Alderman Vasquez, not present. Alderman Napolitano.
Proud to be present here with my colleagues.
Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley.
Still here.
Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Knutson, not present. Alderman Lawson, not present. Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Gardner is present. Alderwoman Clay, not present. Alderman Martin, not present. Alderperson Manai Happenworth, not present. Alderwoman Haddon, not present. Alderwoman Silverstein, not present. President Pro Temp Nugent.
I know. Present.
Present. President Pro Temp Nugent is present.
Present.
Voting is now closed. So there are 26 members present. We have a quorum.
Sorry, the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. In accordance with our Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 59, I move to allow Alderwoman Silverstein, Alderman Burnett, and Alderwoman Dowell, if they are still available, to participate remotely and to be added to the quorum.
Hearing no objection, so moved. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, God with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Chairman Chris Talafaro.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon. God, we give thanks to your holy name. We thank you for being able to work in this city. We thank you for being able to put the issues of the residents before you and before this council. God, we give thanks for all that you do for us. And God, we ask your mercy. We ask your blessings. And God, we ask your forgiveness. God, we know that we are not perfect people, but as we stand before you, Lord, we ask for your grace. And it's because we are imperfect people, Father, we need that grace. We ask that we can come before you boldly as we present the issues of our public. And we thank you for the opportunity not only to serve you, but to serve the people. I thank you for this opportunity to pray before your holy name, and I pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Clerk, please read the call of today's special meeting.
The following call for a special meeting of the City Council was filed in the office of the City Clerk on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, at 10:06 a.m. Clerk Valencia, we, the undersigned members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, do hereby call a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago to be convened on Thursday, November 2nd, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. The special meeting is for the following purpose and no other purpose whatsoever. For the immediate consideration of a resolution authorizing the following referendum question to be submitted to the voters of the entire city of Chicago for the determination if Chicago should continue to keep its designation as a sanctuary city. R. 2023-0004224. For the immediate consideration of a resolution authorizing the following referendum question to be submitted to the voters of the entire city of Chicago for the determination if Chicago shall increase the number of public mental health clinics. For the immediate consideration of a resolution authorizing the following referendum question to be submitted to the voters of the entire city of Chicago for the determination if Chicago shall create flooding mitigation and response plan. R. 2023-0005109. Signed, Anthony Beal, Alderman 9th Ward; Marty Quinn, Alderman 13th Ward; Raymond Lopez, Alderman 15th Ward; Silvana Tavarez, Alderwoman 23rd Ward; Anthony Napolitano, Alderman 41st Ward.
We will now have public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker today is Beverly Chan.
Hi, my name is Beverly, and, but I not speak very good English, and I want to speak my language. But I don't understand why they put the tent and, and the city too much people, and it fuck up all the city. I don't, but you must speak my language, okay? Okay. I'm just a demon guy. Then for what do you do, did you come here? And then, you go come young, send those anger, just go, just go, man, don't worry in here. You know, how do you, you know, how do you, you know, how do you, you know, how do you do, you know, how do you, 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 you know,
We have not only invested financially into our communities, we have invested our lives. When people look at me, they say derogatory things in regard to me being brown, living in this city anyway. I've heard just about everything. I do not let that affect me or hinder me in any sort of way. And I think in regard to that, we need to put ethnic backgrounds aside. We are here as Americans. Citizens are not. We need to help the people that are already here. The undocumented for years already implanted into our society. We do not want a sanctuary city. We do not want a sanctuary state.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker today is Zoe Lee.
I'm gonna try not to curse, but y'all, man, like, I've been researching VODI Act 29. And this is exactly what's going on. Only thing this time is the Hispanics versus blacks. And we don't have that strong black leadership that we had with Harold Washington back then. So y'all are letting the Hispanics do whatever they want to do, keep saying we gotta have dignity, but the blacks aren't doing enough in your leadership skills. So what's the point of being an alderperson if y'all aren't gonna be for the community? That makes no sense. Yes, it's starting to become a race war, but at the end of the day, I know who's gonna win because we built this. Okay? This is unconstitutional. This is inhumane. And to come here and to continue to see more Hispanics and Latinos get jobs than blacks here is a disrespect. It's a punch in the face. You want us to continue to understand and see the problem, but y'all don't see the problem in the black culture. Black people are the influence. We wouldn't, y'all, nobody would be here if it wasn't for us. Okay? This is a whole, and it's a whole new generation. This social media, this now, like, you're not gonna allow this to happen. And we're not gonna allow this to happen because we're gonna force you to do the right thing. And if not, y'all getting out of here. I was in Georgia when they flipped that state blue for the first time. I will knock on every senior's door and make them hold their vote. This place will flip red. It'll be a historical moment. Because y'all not paying attention to them anyway.
That's right.
They're getting displaced. Y'all don't care, but y'all trying to find, y'all trying to find housing for Venezuelans, for Latinos, for all that. Y'all keep sending them over here when they need to go back. Y'all, one time have y'all sent ICE there? ICE need to come. There's prostitution that's behind, there's prostitution that's behind all of these police districts. I live in Streeterville, it's prostitution right up the street.
He ain't even here.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's a disrespect. And y'all continue to allow this to happen, like Mayor Johnson is the most hated. And he's gonna continue to be, the only people that like him is teachers and some of y'all. Okay? Tax, I'm trying to tell you, my tax money is not gonna continue to allow this. Y'all need to find our money, you need to put more things in our neighborhoods. Y'all aren't doing nothing. Small businesses, only thing you're giving it to is Latinos, 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 Latinos. Nah. It's more than that. This is the most segregated city. And the United States is looking at us.
Ms. Lee, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker today is Linda Johnson. Our next speaker today is Linda Johnson. Our next speaker today is Maurice Janusus.
Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
The floor is open. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
And I told, I told.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President.
Did I screw up? Pardon me one second, Alderman Lopez, I screwed something up. This concludes public comment. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. Thank you.
No worries, Madam President.
Apologize.
I would like to move to include Alderman Conway, who has joined us for the purposes of quorum.
Yep, we've included him.
And Chairman, oh. Alan, sorry, forgive me. And in accordance with Rule 59 of the Rules of Order and Procedure, to include Alderwoman Michelle Harris by remote means and participation and in addition to the quorum.
Hearing no objections, so moved.
Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we have three items on the agenda. However, my desire is only to ask for one item to be voted on in the affirmative. Unlike other people in this body, I don't wish to silence the people from having a voice as far as the Bring Home Chicago ordinance. I want the voters to hear that ordinance and have a chance to vote on it. However, I do believe that we need to have the people also to vote on whether or not they want to remain a sanctuary city. The reason I have brought this with some of my colleagues to the floor is not to eliminate Chicago as a sanctuary city. But what it is, is to find some kind of compromise and threshold to stop the bleeding that we're undertaking right now. When you look at what the city is dealing with, we're spending, when we had 12,000 migrants, we were spending $31 million a month at that time. We have 20,000 migrants today. So what is the price tag on that now? And we can't get solid answers to what is costing us right now. Now, we're being asked to vote for a budget that we can't get answers to as far as how much money we're gonna be potentially spending next year on the migrants. We're saying, we're hoping we get money from the state. I'm hoping we get money from the federal government. I'm hoping money just falls out of the sky. But those are hopes and dreams. We have a physical responsibility to vote on a budget that is sound going forward to get us through 2024. And the budget that's being presented to us does not solve that problem. And so, all I'm asking is that we give the people of this great city of Chicago a chance to have a voice on this issue. Now, I guarantee you that if Harold Washington was here today, what he signed into law as an executive order is not what he intended for today. And so, when people, when people say, well, Harold Washington did this, times were different. We didn't have people coming to this city by the thousands. Now, when you look at what else is happening in this country, we have other democratic cities, Denver, California, LA, sending their people to Chicago, New York, they're sending their migrants to Chicago. Why? Because they saying, we can't take anymore. Chicago has yet to say, we can't take anymore. We have to draw the line somewhere. It's a diversion to continue to say, this is a federal problem, we need help from the federal government. Yeah, we know that. But while we're waiting for the federal government to act, we need to be doing something here at home to protect us. Now, we don't even know the people who are coming to Chicago. The people that are coming here, we don't know if they have criminal backgrounds, we don't know if they're child molesters, we don't know if they're murderers, we don't know, we don't know anything concrete about the people coming here. Now, when you look at what's happening, Venezuela are emptying their jails and telling them to walk to the border. So they're coming to Chicago. We already have enough crime here in the city of Chicago. We have enough crime here that we're dealing with. And so, I can go on and on, but Madam President, and I think you're doing a wonderful job up there, may I add? You're doing a wonderful job. This is just a question, a non-binding question, to just ask the people who are paying this 30 and 40 million dollars a month, if they want to continue down this road, or do we want to make our elected officials to try to do something different? Now, I've said this before. If you give me three meals, housing, childcare, education, a voucher for $9,000, you know what? I'll come to Chicago too. And that's what they're doing. They're telling people and they're sending money back to Chicago, I mean, back to Venezuela, to come to Chicago because they're saying, hey, the good times are rolling now. They're taking care of everybody. Now, when we have, when we have Venezuelans that are driving cars, where'd they get a driver's license? Where'd they get insurance from? And then you have Venezuelans being caught with drugs and guns, where they getting them I have a bleeding heart for the people who are coming here that are honestly trying to do better for themselves. I'm with that. But I'm tell you one thing, I'm with my people more. Okay? I'm with my people more. And so, all I'm asking is to just put this question on the ballot, non-binding, non-binding, in order to give the people of this city a voice that they have not had, because nobody ever asked the city of Chicago, do we want to be a sanctuary city? Do we want to be a welcoming city? And I'm gonna close on this. This is my third closing. Sanctuary city, a welcoming ordinance, says nothing about, we have to provide services and goods. Sanctuary city, all it says is, the city of Chicago will not cooperate, organize with the federal government, detain for people to be deported. That's all it says. So where do we get off saying that we have to spend 30 to 40 million a month? That we don't have. Now, if you give me 30 to 40 million a month, my ward will look like the North Side. If you give any alderman on the South and West Side 30 to 40 million a month, you will see a different date. So with that, I'm gonna close, and I just hope that my colleagues, I hope my colleagues see fit to just vote on giving the people a voice that they don't have to see if we want to go down this road. So with that, Madam President, I motion that we pass the first item on the agenda to say whether or not the people of Chicago want to remain a sanctuary city or not. Thank you.
I just first would like to confirm that Alderman Dowell is still with us on the meeting?
I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, the chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I call a question. Ask for a roll call vote.
The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
I have a point of order. A point of order supersedes your point, sir. So, while I do want us to come to some resolve here, I would prefer that we come to some resolve in the right way. From yesterday's meeting, we took two items that were deferred and published, that then requires us to come back to the next regularly scheduled council meeting to deal with those items. One of the items that you want to consider today is one of the items that was deferred and published. That's number one. Number two, we don't have 34 members here in order to suspend the rules and take care of any business because all of this stuff is stuck in committee right now. So unfortunately, I would like to get to where you want to go, Alderman, but I would like for us to do it in a proper way that doesn't render us null and void, null and void in this particular situation. So I would ask that this, that this item be ruled out of order.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. Chair recognizes you, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I renew my calling of the question and ask for an immediate roll call vote.
Chair Irvin has pointed out that the rules need to be suspended. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Order.
Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. We, we have a properly issued notice for a special meeting with the sole subject clearly stated. We're in full compliance with the Meetings, Open Meetings Act. I'm not aware of any rule that needs to be suspended in order for us to take action on that item today. If we have to suspend the rules, we should be stating what rule requires suspension, because I personally don't believe there is one.
Alderman Hopkins, our rules dictate that this has to go through the committee process.
That's not true. This is a direct to City Council, Madam President. This is a direct to City Council.
Sorry, Alderman, I haven't recognized you. Just give me, give me a moment. Just to further answer to Alderman Hopkins, pardon me, pardon me, please, to answer your question, Alderman Hopkins, Item 2 was held in the Committee on Rules. But to hear these today, we would need to vote to suspend the rules. And this is under Rules 41 of our Rules of Order and Procedure that states, quote, "All ordinance shall be referred to the appropriate committees and only acted upon by the City Council at a subsequent meeting on the report of the committee," end quote. So this item was held in committee and not reported up. We are back in session. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Madam.
Point of order, Madam.
Madam President, thank you so much for recognizing me. Counting who's in the chamber and who is at the Committee on Econ, Capital, and Technology Development, it appears that there are not 26 people here to continue this business. Therefore, then, I request a quorum call. And pending that quorum call, assuming there are not enough people, then I motion that we reconvene Tuesday at 9:45 a.m.
Recognizes, the chair, pardon me. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Two things. First off, there was already a motion as well as a, an appeal on the floor before the Alderman of the 35th Ward spoke. Two, we're not even sure if he's in the room because technically, he doesn't count towards quorum or the roll call for today because he's been bouncing in and out and is listed as not being present. And I haven't heard him being included in this conversation today. So I would refer back to the original appeal of the decision of the chair by Alderman Beal so that we can proceed. And if the Alderman of the 35th Ward would like to make a motion to be included in the roll, he can do that when we're finished.
We need quorum to conduct official business, and the question has been raised whether or not we have quorum. Clerk, please call the roll.
The question's been called by someone not on the roll.
Madam Clerk, you can call the roll.
Alderman Spada, Alderman Spada not present. Alderman Hopkins.
Present.
Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderman Dowell not present in chambers. Alderman Robinson not present. Can we treat them as, can we treat them? Okay, we're gonna, they're looking into that. I'm gonna continue, we're not gonna not count them just yet, but we're gonna continue forward. We're gonna continue with the members present here, and they're gonna look into that. Okay, so, let's go. Alderman, Alderperson Robinson not present in chambers. Alderman Nancy not present. Alderman Hall not present. Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell is present. Chairwoman Harris not present in chambers. Alderman Beal, Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Chico, Alderman Chico is present. Alderwoman Lee, Alderwoman Lee is present. Alderwoman Ramirez not present. Alderman Quinn, Alderman Quinn is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez not present. Alderman Lopez is present. Alderwoman Coleman not present. Alderman Moore, Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis, Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea, Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Taylor not present. Alderman Mosley not present. Alderman Rodriguez not present. Alderwoman Tabarez, Alderwoman Tabarez is present. Alder, Alderwoman Scott.
I'm present for the fourth time.
Alderwoman Scott is present. Alderman Sigcho Lopez not present. Alderperson Fuentes not present. Alderman Burnett not present. Alderman Irvin.
Present.
Alderman Irvin is present. Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Present.
Alderman Talia Pharoah is present. Alderwoman Cruz not present. Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagasback.
Present.
Alderman Wagasback is present. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez not present. Alderman Conway.
Present.
Alderman Conway is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Diegus, Alderman Diegus is present. Alderwoman Mitz, Alderwoman Mitz not present. Alderman Spazado.
Nick Spazado is still here for the valet quorum we started with.
Alderman Spazado is present. Alderman Vasquez not present. Alderman Napolitano.
Present for the fourth time.
Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley.
Still here.
Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Knudsen not present. Alderman Lawson not present. Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Gardner is present. Alderwoman Clay not present. Alderman Martin not present. Alderperson Monae Happenworth not present. Alderwoman Haddon not present. Alderwoman Silverstein not present. President Pro temp Nugent.
Present.
President Pro temp Nugent is present. Did I miss anyone? Alderman Mosley, Alderman Mosley is present. Did anyone else come in?
We have 25. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank, hold on. Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. Just, fine, just as a point of order, this body has already made and approved a motion allowing several people to participate remotely once the initial quorum was made. Nothing in our rules declares their presence voided out by a new quorum call, which means everybody from Silverstein, Burnett, Dowell, and Harris are all to be added to our roll call because this body approved it in accordance with the Rules of Order and Procedure.
At this point, and so we are limited. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez, Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Given that we do not have quorum per state law, we cannot proceed. Therefore, then, if, I believe we should return back Tuesday at 9:45.
There's been a motion to lay it on the table? There's been a motion to lay it on the table by, sorry, there's a motion to... Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez, as we don't have quorum, our options, our options are to, hang on. Sorry. So Alderman Lopez, as we don't have quorum, our options are to recess or adjourn. If we don't recess, then we adjourn.
President, is, what, what is the number that the clerk has produced?
So the clerk, per the, pardon me, folks, the roll call per the clerk just now was 25.
We have 25 people with four people who we've given the right to vote to.
We don't have...
You are intentionally disenfranchising three black aldermen right now. You are choosing to disenfranchise three African-Americans who are elected to represent people in this body. We have already voted to approve their presence.
Alderman Lopez are, are only options with 25 that roll, pardon me, folks, pardon me.
There is nothing in this book that says a quorum call invalidates their presence here.
Folks, under, Sergeant at Arms, could you kindly help us? So, thank you for your patience. Under Rule 59, we have to have quorum. There was a fresh quorum call, though, and under Rule 59, without quorum, we cannot take into account the online presence.
I am asked to be here.
Alderman Lopez, I kindly ask you to, to offer a motion to recess or adjourn. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Madam President, point of order. I would like for Corporation Council to issue an opinion on why those people cannot be counted as present when they were initially added to the roll under Rule 59. I would like to have Corporation Council give us a ruling. I would like to have Corporation Council give us a ruling.
So, under Rule 59, when we took a quorum call, quorum was found lacking. Thus, we can't take into account the four folks that are participating virtually.
Respectfully, when we have a quorum, we voted to allow four people into the room. After that point, those people are allowed, because we voted to give them the authority to vote and to be present from that point on. You cannot unilaterally say, "Now, it's convenient for us. We're gonna exclude you, because we don't want you in the room." So, again, I ask for a ruling from our Corporation Council on that issue.
You can give me, give me one minute. So we did not have a quorum, and so remote participation is not allowed under the rule. Under, right now, we have two choices. We can either adjourn or recess. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Madam, Madam President, forgive me, but we actually have three choices, and I move for the selection of a new temporary presiding officer of this meeting. Fine, let me, let me, let me clarify.
Your motion is.
I move that, I move that Brendan Riley be selected as temporary presiding officer of this meeting, which is well within our rights during a special meeting or when we're still trying to organize our meeting. Per the rules, per Rule 2, for the selection of a temporary presiding officer. A simple majority of those present, I push for, I, I move Brendan Riley be named by this body to preside over this special meeting. And ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Lopez, this violates Rule 2 of the orders. We've offered to either recess or adjourn, and without an option to recess, we are going to adjourn.
I appeal the decision of the Chair to declare picking a presiding officer out of order.
Again, this meeting is adjourned.